I call the meeting to order of the Planning Commission, November eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Regular meeting. Roll call by Recording Secretary?
All members present.
Okay. Considering you didn't have any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda. I know Alicia pointed out I didn't number it correctly. I used to teach second grade, so shame on me. So there's two number sixes, so we'll just change that.
Make it six A, six and six A.
Nine, yeah, ten, eleven.
Okay, you just want to do it that way, okay, seven, eight.
Yeah. We don't have to do anything formal about it, do we?
No.
Okay.
It's, you just.
Approval of minutes for October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Uh, three tiny things.
Will you only make a motion first?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I make the motion for three minutes.
Of course, I looked around the car. You want to, somebody second?
I'll second.
Second from Jeannie. Any discussion about that? All those in favor? Oh, wait, we're not going to discuss it. We gotta discuss it, duh. Alright, so nothing I remember what they are. The first one was number. Something that Chuck Weiss said. He said yes, but he just left out the S.
Yay, he said yay, he didn't say.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's section, um, seven, number six.
Yep.
And there was a Noah one too. Oh, yeah, number seven. Asked if the town is helping with the infrastructure.
Oh.
Let me add one more, number ten. Roman numeral ten.
Okay. It's perfect.
And I don't, I don't see it now.
Was it taken?
No. Oh, it was a part where Jeannie talked about, um, okay, it was the number ten.
I like that one.
Thirty, number thirty-two.
Ten.
I just thought the way it was worded, it sounds like one side of Crescent Street isn't zone commercial anymore, but it is. Maybe it's just me thinking it says that. Cause Jeannie said at one time, but she was explaining how it ended up that way, I think.
So it.
It is still zone commercial. I just thought the way it was worded, it sounds like it isn't zone commercial anymore.
Oh, so it should be Jeannie said that.
Yeah, yeah.
That it peasants is.
And that's how I got it.
And I just had one little one.
And that is, that was number, uh, not ten. That was number, uh, eight. Okay, and you're.
And mine is under number ten.
Better connections?
Yes, and then number four. Green Mountain Power, just a typo.
Oh, gosh.
Oh, I didn't catch that.
And, oh, I've got one more. Number eight, Senior Center is, the C N, you've got an N instead of a R.
I just can't believe how fast you get these out anyway. So can we, can we have friendly amendment to accept the minutes with the changes?
And I had just had one question, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Number eight, uh, the last page. Noah Schmidt suggested we remove parking library museum earlier. He suggested wayfinding signs?
Yeah, those are, yeah, those, yeah, those are signs that give directions to people where they.
Okay.
Alternative parking places.
I, I wouldn't, what, I didn't remember that word, so, okay, I'm good.
So I'll make a friendly amendment to Judy's motion to.
Well, she didn't say accept.
Oh.
She just, motion to. So you don't really have to do it, you could do, yeah, the other portion.
So what do we do, just make a new motion?
Yeah, just make a new mo, just to accept the minutes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the changes that Judy and I came up with. Does anybody else have changes?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, um, comments for, approve, yeah, we did that. Comments for citizens. We got some, how nice. Any comments, Mr. Alden? No?
You already picked it, I was just gonna comment that there was no Zoom link. Meeting whether to advertise us, I don't know, but there's no Zoom link.
Yeah, I just realized that now when I tried to get on. I think Aaron's working on it though. Maybe we'll be happy that it won't happen, what happened at the DRB meeting.
That's what you did.
Okay, um.
I don't know about it, though.
Okay.
Appoint a new vice chair and clerk. I want to nominate Judy for vice chair. She would accept the nomination. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
We need a second.
Oh, I'll second.
Any discussion or other nominations? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And to appoint a new clerk, case Alicia's never here, not here, and somebody has to take the minutes, is that what we're doing for?
No, you have a, yeah, that's, that's it, but who is the clerk?
Um, it was Judy, yeah.
Oh.
And she always took notes whenever, you know, we went you for a while when you went to her.
Oh.
I have done before, yeah.
Will you do it?
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll nominate.
Don't not be here.
As our clerk.
I'll second that.
Any other nominees or?
Unless Ted wants to do it.
Ted wants to do it? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, village bylaws and possible changes, signed bylaws and possible changes needed, and I put village bylaws, but I noticed when I read the minutes over that it was supposed to be town bylaws too. In the event of a merger, these would be the bylaws we would, you know, that would move forward, the ones that we were having tonight. So I asked Aaron and Jared, but Aaron ended up doing the work, Jared was out for a minute, to take, to, um, please include this in your handouts tonight, so I, I did copy the town sign stuff and the village sign stuff. They are a little bit different. I know we worked on village sign stuff, but we're working on the village amendments. And Jared, I know you have specific reasons you wanted us to bring this up, and Jeannie, can you like point us to the correct section you want us in?
Um, so in the village regulations section, I'm gonna start off easy, five forty point three, exempt signs. It's more or less a typo here, so two exempt signs are repeated in the list. Um, and that's L and R. Off-premise signs except as provided in ten VSA chapter twenty-one is repeated, so that should probably get removed.
Wait, are we in the right one?
In, in village?
Is that what this is, village?
Prohibited signs, is it four or three? Oh, exempt.
Exempt signs, I'm not sure that.
Oh, that is point four.
It is town.
It is five forty point four, Jared.
Okay, so you're saying, um, wait, say it again?
So in the village sign regulations, section five forty point three, exempt signs.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, five forty point four, you're right, prohibited signs. Letter L, off-premise signs except as provided in ten VSA chapter twenty-one is also repeated as letter R. So that's just a.
Oh, yeah.
Quick typo there.
Okay.
Um, but I wanted to talk a little bit more about sign regulations in general. Um, particularly in the village, because that's where the majority of signs are. Um, we've had some people trying to obtain sign permits who have multiple businesses on one lot. And currently, the regulations are limiting of signage per lot. And we were wondering if we could talk about, um, extending those limitations to per businesses on one lot as opposed to one lot.
I don't understand that, cause like my daughter and her husband have Johnny's Kitchen, and I know they had thirty square feet of signage for their business.
Right, so.
But it doesn't say that it has to be one lot. Do you know where it says that in the sign ordinance?
Yes, so in section five forty point five, sign standards. A, all signs, one, permanent signs. The number of permanent signs per lot and maximum allowable sizes shall be as specified below. And they go on to say, um, one of each freestanding wall sign and awning sign. So they have size limitations. So per lot, when there's multiple businesses on each lot, and you have to combine them, even with the extended fifty square feet total for multiple businesses, say on a freestanding sign, they get to be pretty small if there's multiple businesses. And so we were wondering how to alter that to be favorable to the businesses so that their signage could be seen. So as an example, not saying, I'm not calling for it, but, um, with the freestanding sign, the businesses allowed one sixteen-square-foot sign for the lot. And if there's four businesses, that's a four-by-four sign, very small, can't really read it.
Right. So should we change it per business?
Wondering if we could maybe do per business. There are some businesses around town that seem to have been, and I hate to use the word grandfathered, but around for a long time, and have multiple signage that exceeds our current size limits, uh, per lot. And so we want to even everything out, the regulations, to make it equal for everybody.
If we changed it per business, would that solve the problem and?
It would be a step in the right direction, yes.
And why do you feel about that, George, on the DRB?
We don't deal with signs usually.
Oh, you do, you know, okay.
Unless there's been an appeal based off of a violation, which is fairly rare, uh, that's usually an over-the-counter permit.
Okay, how big, how do you feel about it, Aaron? Is that our new zoning and planning director?
I think it's, I mean, there's monument signs for a property, and then those monument signs, as we see everywhere, there's multiple businesses listed under that, so we just need to make sure we're fair to the economic development of our town, um, and the businesses within it, to make sure that they're able to advertise while also still preserving the character of our village, so.
So you're saying yay?
I'm saying yay, yeah.
How about, uh, my board members here? How do you feel about that? Changing the word per business for permanent signs? What about unaffixed signs? That doesn't need to be changed, does it?
Um, that's something that hadn't been discussed.
We haven't really gotten any permits for unaffixed signs, really.
Uh, no, we haven't.
Yeah.
So it's not really at the forefront of our thought process regarding that as of yet, but it may be in the future. As each business is liberated with the ability to create larger signs for their businesses, they might want to go out and put an A-frame out or multiple A-frames.
But is it all of a sudden seem really scary?
So we could, yeah.
What do you think, Jeannie?
I, I, I am in favor of changing it to, um, business as opposed to lot. Is, is that, that's not going to make a huge increase in signage per lot?
Well, we can also regulate monument sign size, so people don't have like massive monument signs and then the signage underneath it. So I think that's really the whole thing that we're discussing right now is having.
What's a monument sign?
A monument sign is the big sign in the front of the property.
Okay.
Where is the regulations regarding monument size? That's what, that was.
We don't even have discussed.
It's, they're, they're considered freestanding signs. Each lot is allowed one sixteen-square-foot sign, or multiple businesses can combine their signage not to exceed fifty square feet.
Yeah, that's the little number three.
So perhaps maybe we can make it an adjustment for just wall signs, so that their wall signs aren't limited to four square feet on the building. Um, but retain the fifty-square-foot maximum for freestanding signs or monument signs.
Okay, so instead of changing the top part where it says per bit, per lot, we're gonna change it only at wall si, at wall signs?
Oh.
Well, there could be a note.
Wouldn't the permanent sign be per, um, per business? And then if you look at that little number three, maybe that should stand on its own, and that says if one sign is requested for a group of use or units, um, it shall not exceed fifty square feet, maybe that becomes like part of the chart. So it's, it's right there, cause I mean, I had to look down to see where, where it was. And.
Where would it go in the chart?
Because that's a permanent sign, so you just do another little thingy there, you know?
Yeah.
Permanent signs, and these are, um, per business, but then where it just stands on its own, but to have it as just a little footnote, does it really work?
Yeah. So number three becomes the third row?
Or, or it can just be a, or it could be like. One permanent signs and two permanent signs for businesses, or permanent signs for lots, and this one will be for, the top one would be permanent signs per business, and then have like number two, permanent signs for lots.
Another, an alternative would be to create a number five footnote next to wall sign, and say with multiple businesses are on one lot, each business is allowed up to sixteen square feet of wall sign.
Each wall sign and.
We could start.
Wall signs in each section?
There.
I think it also would hurt to maybe look at some precedents for signage in other towns similar to ours that have village centers and revisit this once we have more concrete way of offered, like options.
Yeah, so do some research.
Yeah, I, I would love to make do a little dive into this, and then maybe at the next meeting.
I'll help you if you want.
Yeah, and then at the next meeting, present something to us.
With changes, yeah.
Yeah, with the changes.
Yeah, it would be great.
Okay. Tell us about that.
And I just have, um, a question regarding this type of, uh, signage. Is this just the village, or would this include the town and the village?
Yeah, that's gonna have to be discussion when we look at the village sign, when we look at the town sign stuff as part of our.
Yeah, that was a question I had too.
I mean. Okay. Yeah.
Do you want the town sign regs to mirror the village regs, or are you gonna what?
I was just, cause I was gonna ask, but why, why is there a difference between?
Yeah, I skipped them for now, cause I didn't know.
Yeah.
If you did want that.
Let me see what's next.
Noah?
Yeah, uh, there's probably a number that, you know, we think of those, those lots with multiple business, Shaws, um, Womir Square, um, the Okemo Marketplace, where, um, there's probably a situation where, hey, they, they add some businesses where all of a sudden, way too much signage. I think that, you know, there was a, um, I think it met all the requirements, but, um, at the golf course, those, those two big signs where you could see very quickly where, hey, there's, um, you know, the wedding venue, that's its own standalone entity, and then maybe the driving range becomes its own business or something where all of a sudden it becomes that billboard, so I would definitely say if there's a way to, um, you know, have it per lot, there is some limitations and
Yeah.
and maybe a, um, for certain situations, you send it over to George and DRB takes a look at it for, for those things, but there's probably a situation.
Cause I know Troy, he definitely exceeded the signage there, but he, his argument was he has four different businesses.
Yeah, yeah, so there's probably, um, certain situations where, um, it makes sense, like Shaw's redoing their stuff, like, um, you know, it seemed like maybe they had some issues there where, um, it makes sense for certain situations, other ones, um, we wanna make sure we, we have a.
Okay, that's a good point.
I think that might be easily achievable if we just limit it to the village, because the town is much more restrictive. They have six square feet per sign on one lot, so, um.
In the town?
In the town.
Yep.
Um.
And I guess it probably should be looked at of with this merger coming together, you know?
Yeah.
What does make the most sense, and maybe it still has within the village limits, these are the rules, and, or what was historically the village limits, these are the rules outside, it's not.
Zoning districts is not that much.
Across that branch after the merger, yeah.
Yes. Okay, so I guess we're gonna move on, and Aaron and I are gonna do some research, and then.
And so this will be on, next month's.
On next, next agenda, yeah, definitely. Okay. We have our town's learning, zoning updates with Martha from the Mount Scottney Regional Planning Commission.
I'm having a little bit of a technical problem, I can't log onto my computer, but I did bring notes.
I know, I didn't print out your, the entire town zoning, cause I don't wanna come back as a tree.
So I was mainly gonna focus on the, um, definitions for now.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Rick is next.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Oh, yeah, because.
I could defer if you'd like, but it's, okay.
I'm sorry, Martha. I, Aaron and I made changes afterwards, I'm looking at the old one here.
Yeah, I don't trust that.
Okay. Um, are we into the, from our first PowerPoint?
Yeah, I sent Aaron the PowerPoint. Let you print it out for a second.
I just sent her the question, she passed, we shared, and I can pull up, I have it right here.
Okay.
Um, can you even set screen share?
I'm not on Zoom, I don't have the Zoom link.
Oh.
Yeah, I never got.
When it was on to an advantage.
I think you're allowed now, Aaron. Yeah, back here.
Go back there, okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, break.
I can't, yeah, there's no Zoom link here.
Oh, she's hot.
Well, I am Rick Singary, and I work for Home Share Vermont, I'm the outreach and communications specialist. And the reason I've come here is, um, even if home sharing isn't something that you can or are interested in doing, I'd really like for everyone to know about it, um, so if you do meet someone who either has a home to share or is looking for an affordable place to live, um, you know that this is an option now here in this part of the state. So, um, what Home Share does, in effect, is, uh, we match people who are, who have room in their homes with people looking for that affordable place to live. The host can ask for rent or help around the home, um, and the guest gets this affordable, uh, place to live. An average rent right now, three hundred and eighty dollars a month, which is, um, about a fourth or a fifth of the average one-bedroom apartment in Vermont. So, uh, just recently, if we, there we go, um, we have expanded, uh, two years ago into Northern Windsor County, as you see on the map, uh, the blue area, and that was done with a partnership, uh, with the Thompson Senior Center in Woodstock. They started a small home share program in Woodstock and a few towns in the area, uh, but right before the pandemic, and then had to shut down. Started again, and, um, with additional funding from the state of Vermont, we were able to partner, uh, with the Thompson and, uh, take care of Northern Windsor County, uh, where we now have seven matches. Um, the state this year gave us additional funding to expand to all of Windsor County and Wyndham County. That's with a partnership with the Wyndham and Windsor Housing Trust. And then in all the Northeast Kingdom, uh, that's with a partnership with the Council on Aging there. So what we do, uh, to make a match is we have a very methodical or purposeful, or you can even say slow process, um, because it does take time. Um, someone applies with us, there's no fee to apply, and when we get that application, we'll do background and reference checks. Uh, the next step is then an interview by one of our case managers, uh, with the host or the guest. Um, and when we think we have a potential match for someone, uh, we'll call, let them know about the other person, and vice versa. Tell them what we've learned about this person, see if they'd like to meet them, and if so, we set up an introduction. And the case manager is present there. Afterwards, we see if they want to move forward. The next step is a, uh, two-week trial. Someone moves in lightly with a suitcase, not a U-Haul, and they see how they get along, or if home sharing is for them, if this is the right person for them. And if so, uh, then we move to a match, and we create a match agreement which stipulates, uh, what the rent will be, what the help will be, about how many hours a week that, that looks like, and also the rules of the house. Can they have a pet? Can they have, um, guests come over? Do they need to give, uh, a warning, you know, when someone's coming? Can they be overnight guests? Could it be overnight romantic guests? We asked a lot of questions, we've been around for forty-three years doing this, so we've got all the questions pretty much figured out, we hope. Um, and then the, the match goes on for as long as everyone's happy. Uh, the match itself is a month-to-month agreement, and either can end it with a, a thirty-day notice. Um, but most will go for about a year to five years. The average right now is two. Uh, we do have one match that's on nineteen years and one that's on twenty years. So sometimes we really get it right. And no matter how long that match goes on for, they can call their, um, case manager and ask for help if anything needs to be discussed. All right. So we like to say that home sharing is safe. Uh, I mentioned the background checks, we do six background checks and three reference checks. Um, the interview and the introduction, uh, we have one host who's been a host three times, and she says that we're worse than the FBI and the CIA put together. Thank God. Um, and it is the number one reason people tell us that they like to use Home Share. Um, I'll just give you a, a little bit of an idea of, of what a home share can be like. Um, this is Brian in the middle with his mother, Gail, uh, who has some memory issues. And Brian, um, you know, sometimes is out away from home on business, and different people would check in on Gail. And he really wanted, um, someone to be there consistently. And, um, you're allowed to say no along the way, along, you know, in the process, when we call and say, you know, what do you think about Rick? No, um, or, you know, uh, they beat me and say no, or we do with the two-week trial, they can say no. Well, Gail and, um, and, uh, Brian probably lead the league in knows, I think they said no six or seven times, until they met Addison, who, um, coincidentally is from Addison County. So, uh, he walked in and they met him and they said, that's our person. He is in education, Gail was in education, um, and they will have hour-long, two-hour-long conversations about, um, teaching. Brian will walk into the kitchen, if they start gabbing, he just walks out, cause he knows it's not gonna end. But one thing he was concerned about was, um, because of, of Gail's memory issues, what would it be like when Addison would bring, um, people his age, you know, thirty-somethings over? And what has happened is Gail engages, and it's been really a pretty wonderful match. All right. Um, the next thing we like to say is that it's helpful. So, um, the guest can provide up to twelve hours of help a week in services, and that's help around the home. It's not home healthcare, personal care, it's, uh, yard work, mowing the lawn, shoveling the snow, it can be tech help, pet care. Um, it can be, um, running errands or driving someone to, um, appointments. Uh, the average that our guests provide in help is eight and a half hours per week. And for the hosts, um, you know, they are helping someone find a place to live, uh, which is, right now, a pretty phenomenal thing that they can provide. Okay? So we also, uh, make sure it's affordable. First of all, there's no fee to apply. There is a fee, a one-time fee, if a match is made. It's on a sliding scale based on income, it goes from sixty to five hundred dollars. If anyone has a problem paying it, we can set up a program, or we'll waive it. Um, we're not gonna let that fee get in the way of what would be a compatible match. For the host, they save money on the help they might pay someone to do some of the work around the home. They earn extra income, uh, in the rent they receive, and I keep using this term, affordable place to live. We cap the rent at six hundred and fifty dollars a month. Um, a, they can charge, a host can charge a little more, eight hundred dollars if it's a ADU, um, or a private apartment. They can also ask for a share of utilities if needed. But as someone provides more help, then the, uh, what's asked for in rent goes down, and that's where that eight, three hundred and eighty-dollar figure comes from. Thirty percent of the hosts ask for no rent at all. They just want someone in the home. They just want someone to provide help, companionship, an overnight presence, to feel safe. Um, so, uh, that's a pretty staggering number when you think of it, that, uh, right now we have a hundred and five matches, so there's probably, what, thirty-one people uh, who are, are living, um, thanks to a Home Share match for no rent, and their hosts are getting, uh, that, that help. We're trying to make it easy, um, if someone was trying to rent on their own, um, you know, it can be difficult to, to find, uh, someone to live with or, um, to do that screening, uh, the matching, um, we take care of that. At any given time, we're working now with about ninety to a hundred hosts, and about ninety to a hundred guests. Um, so when someone applies with us, it's not a waiting list. Um, we might have that right person right. We might have that right person right now. And that's what happened with these two over in Creeche. That's Honey and Kayla. So Honey had applied. She really just wants someone in the house as a just-in-case presence, but also for the rent. And Kayla had just changed careers and knew she was gonna have to work in a nonprofit, earn a little less to get experience. And she found a job in White River Junction and then couldn't find a place to live. And so she was commuting an hour from Waterbury to work. And she applied with us. And as soon as she applied, the case manager said, I have the person who's just ten minutes away from where she works. And the two of them, if you met them, it's like they've known each other their whole lives. It's like mother and daughter. They can't even look at each other without bursting into laughter. They do pop popcorn every Friday night, sit down and watch a movie together, catch up on their lives, so. All right. It's also fun. You know, there's companionship. You share meals, you go on adventures, like number one adventures, going for Maple Creamies, of course. You play games and do puzzles. We like to say, we make a match, you make a friend. This is Shirley and Beth. And on Monday nights, they hop in Shirley's, who's ninety-eight years old, now ninety-nine. Her VW Bug there, named Petunia, I'm not making it up. And they go play bingo together. The rest of the week, they have matching recliners. They watch TV together after they eat dinner. And they, you know, watch Jeopardy and Wheel of Fortune and reality shows, so. This is a woman who has six adult children and who are coming and staying in the spare bedroom on a six-week basis. They would come for a week at a time, so they were on a rotation. And they asked their mom if she'd consider home sharing. And now she calls Beth, her seventh child, so. It is for everyone. There are no age or income requirements on the host or guest side. So a lot of times, people think that the hosts have to be someone who's retired or, you know, a senior. We have people as young as twenty-eight who are sharing their homes, as old as one hundred. It does skew higher, seventy-two the average age. For those who are guests, it ranges right now from nineteen to eighty-two with the average age of forty-seven. So you do have, you know, individuals on the guest side, for instance, who are going through, changing their lives. It could be a divorce. It could be that we have several people who have moved back to Vermont to be close to their children and grandchildren. And so this is a great affordable way for them to find housing. All right. Once a year, we ask people how we're doing and what the benefits of of home sharing is. We've been doing this for over twenty years. And every year, ninety-five percent or more have said that they're satisfied or very satisfied with Home Share Vermont. Through those twenty-plus years, one hundred percent have said they would recommend Home Share Vermont to a family member or a friend. And then we also, you know, this started forty-three years ago by three volunteers in Burlington. And I'm sure they thought, what a great idea, this is so Vermont. But they probably didn't think of these knock-on effects, that people feel happier, they feel safer in their home, they're less lonely. When you think of the social isolation that we saw during the pandemic, this is a great cure for that. You know, they're they're calling their adult children less to come over for help. And they're, they worry less about money, they sleep better, they eat better. We have one wonderful host, Nancy Stone, who has been a host three times. And she says, each a different story, each a deeply rewarding relationship. This is a picture of Sunwar and Randy. Randy has developmental disabilities, has a condominium on his own and really needed someone to help him clean the apartment and also make sure he eats well. He was eating nothing but frozen foods, a lot of processed foods. Sunwar now cooks for Randy and they have nothing but fresh food, very few things in the freezer. And he's Nepalese, he's Sunwar. And Randy sometimes eats Nepali food and sometimes even enjoys it, so. They're quite a match. And then I'll leave information here for people to take. You can also keep it, you know, in the town offices. But I don't know how much time I have, but probably time for a question or two, if anyone would like to ask. Yeah, go ahead, Judy.
Does anybody ever have more than one person home share?
Yeah. So the minimum requirement for a host is a private room, a shared or private bath, and shared common areas. So the most common match will be a single person. But when we have someone who has multiple bedrooms that they have to share or an ADU, then we can have a couple or a small family, a single parent with children. And we have been able to do that. It's a small percentage. And, you know, we try, when we do have those opportunities, if we have guests that are, as I described, a small family or a single parent with children, then we try to match them, so.
So I have a couple of questions. One of them is in regard to the reference checks that was listed before.
Yeah.
So I assume the reference check is done on the guest. Is it also done on the host? And is it personal or professional references?
Yeah, great question. So the same scrutiny we use on guests, we'd use on hosts, right? You you wanna make sure for a host that, you know, whomever you bring as a guest, the host is gonna feel safe. But also for that guest, you wanna make sure that you're taking them to a home with someone you've also screened. So, yeah, everybody who applies, immediately, we do background and reference checks. It's also important to do some initial, you know, those initial background and reference checks before our case managers go to the home of a host, for instance. We wanna make sure that, you know, it is a safe situation. The number one thing we look for, that we're screening for, is that someone hasn't been convicted of a crime against person or property. If they are, immediately, we cannot work with them. So the references are more personal than professional, but they can be professional. The, what we're trying to find from those references is that, trying to learn about their character, their interests, as we try to make that compatible match. So when we try to match someone, you know, one, where they want to live, the rent they can pay, the help they can provide. But we also wanna make sure, too, that there there's a compatibility, right? That there's interests that match up. And it could be anything from, will they allow a pet or smoking or cannabis use to politics? Some people are apolitical, right? And it doesn't matter to them if they walk into a home and the person has, you know, a TV on all day long with the news of one side or the other. But other people would cringe at that, right? And so it's important to know that. Lifestyle, you know? If you stay up all night long listening to loud, you know, Scottish indie music and, you know, I listen to nothing but Japanese opera, go to bed by eight, we probably aren't a match, or maybe we're a weird one. But, you know, so we we do try to find, you know, some interests and commonalities. And those references really help us with that. They also can be a red flag sometimes, too. You know, we can learn some negative things about people and won't be able to match you.
And how about renters insurance? Is that required on the guest side?
It is not. Most, most hosts don't require it, but could ask for it.
One last thing, how are the work hours tracked?
They are really between host and guest.
Okay.
So if I moved in with you and the idea was that I would help you approximately five hours a week. Now, it's gonna vary, some weeks, right? There's snow and then there's, you know, none for a month or whatever it is. But if it's consistently, you know, it was supposed to be five and it looks like I'm doing three, you can ask for more in rent. And that agreement is fluid. As I said, it's month-to-month. So let's say the initial idea was I would pay four hundred and fifty dollars and provide five hours of help for you each week. And the help hasn't been quite as much, it's been about three hours, and you'd like to get five fifty. And, you know, you can either come to me or, and then we get the case manager involved in doing a new agreement, so.
So there is a little oversight with the case manager in Home Share Vermont?
You always have, you'll always have that case manager available, you know, to get involved if you need it, so. They check in, especially early on, monthly, then every few months, then about every six months, every year. We get to a point about four or five years into a match where people don't return the calls. And at that point, we we just wanna make sure if it's still going on or not. But at any point, so I've taken calls, you know, where matches have been going on for like five years and they wanted to talk to a case manager because something has changed. It could be something like initially, they allowed the dog to come over, you know, once or twice a week. And now the dog's coming over longer and then staying. And that was in the initial agreement. And so at that point, either the agreement changes, my behavior changes, we go back to once or twice a week with the dog, or it's the end of the match, so.
How do people find out about you? Do you like advertise? Are you on town websites?
We're not on town websites, but we do advertise. So, and then I do a ton of outreach. But, you know, we'll be in Deerfield Valley News, Mountain Times, Vermont Standard.
Do you visit, like, senior centers or?
I do, yeah.
That's where I first met them, was the senior center.
Oh, right.
They had a huge event. They had a bunch of matches there. And I really just saw this as a really great opportunity to at least take one step in the right direction. There's a lot of people aging in place, there's a lot of professionals looking for housing. I think this is a great initial solution for this area.
I say I'll go anywhere, talk to anybody at any time. Last fiscal year, we did a hundred and two presentations and outreach events for a small.
This is our senior solution person right here. So leave me your card.
Tomorrow night, I'm in Bethel. And on Saturday morning, I'm in Guilford, so I get around, yeah.
I'm familiar with this program, but your presentation's great.
No, thank you. Yeah, one more.
Question on how you advise your hosts. It's one thing to have a guest over your house, it's different when you're accepting rent. You've now created a different relationship, different zoning, different codes, different liability that you're responsible for. You know, a standard homeowner's policy is no longer in effect. And that's not gonna cover a situation where you're renting, where you're accepting cash. How do you, how do you advise your, your hosts on how best to navigate having proper coverage?
To check with their insurance agent. It's the most important thing to do. Yeah, I can't tell you how it gets, how does it affect anybody's situation. But there's also tax implications. So it's good to check with your tax attorney. And I'll just give you very briefly everything I know about taxes. First of all, that rent is taxable, it's earned income. So a lot of people are concerned about how that might affect benefits, for instance, right? So that's important to check on. The other thing is, there is an advantage to home sharing in Vermont as opposed to renting directly. A number of years ago, the state legislature passed a law. If you rent, so if you rent for your property taxes, you include, it's your household income. So you would include the renters' income as part of your household income. If you have a Home Share Vermont agreement, legislature said you do not have to include that renters' or now guests' income in your household income. How that affects anybody's property taxes, I couldn't tell you. But it's a good thing to check with your tax attorney on how it might save, it might be an advantage.
That piece isn't gonna, isn't gonna hurt you, it's the liability.
Yeah, right.
You know, it's really, hosts need to be very educated on, on the changes if they're accepting money in their house.
Fair point.
Is there any other questions?
Is that a formal lease? Are there, are there tenant laws that are associated with that?
It's an agreement, a month-to-month agreement. But tenant laws do indeed exist. You know, would certainly be in effect there, so.
Thank you, Rick.
All right, thanks very much.
Really informative.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to town zoning updates with Martha. Martha, I asked George to be here, as chair of the DRB. Can we start with the issue with well shields? And I've also got some emails from people that are concerned about that. George Dunnett, he's not here, but he's sent me a long email about his concerns about, you know, the state not protecting well shields as we have in our town. And he he made the point in his email that the environmental court has always sided with Ludlow on this issue when things went to environmental court over well shields.
So you require that the well shield be entirely on the property?
Be protected, yeah.
Right. My question to BLCT was just, are you allowed to do that? And it sounded, from their response, like if you, and I'll, I can look into it some more, but it sounded like they were saying, if Ludlow hasn't accepted responsibility for administering the state water and wastewater laws, then that's probably overstepping your authority, so.
George, do you wanna speak to it?
I can definitely speak to it. This is, so this is, we'll call it worded from legal counsel on how the town of Ludlow is able to regulate this. So I'm gonna read an excerpt. This is from a decision that was issued to someone. The State of Vermont Environmental Protection Rules, Chapter One, Wastewater Systems and Potable Water Supply Rules, effective November sixth, twenty twenty-three, at section one dash one oh two E, states, "The rules do not limit the powers of the state or local authorities to control existing or potential threats to health, to human health or the environment, of limit of excess of other authorities to regulate human health, safety, or welfare." Further, section one oh three B states "That municipalities may continue to have ordinances or bylaws that do not establish technical standards." This is the important part. "For example, that they are not specifically regulating potable water supplies or wastewater systems, but rather regulating development in general. Setbacks, understanding the unique physical and economic features of the town and village of Ludlow. For example, its exposure to catastrophic flooding and its heavy resilience on the tourism and ski industry and the impacts of development upon each and to allow for the ordinary continued development without restricting adjacent properties." "It has been longstanding position of the Development Review Board that the potable water supply and wastewater system isolation shields be located entirely upon each individual lot without burdening or restricting future use of adjacent properties without written and recorded easements from adjacent properties. The purpose is to not regulate the technical standards, regulate potable water supplies or wastewater systems. That is left to the rules."
George, can you send me that so I can include it in the minutes?
George, can you send me that so we can include it in the video show?
So, so basically, so I wanted to read the, so that's the way the lawyer, our town council wrote it, right? And the argument is, for this particular case, that there was a subdivision where they had so many lots, they were encumbering like two hundred feet into the neighboring lots and basically were forcing, it was in an area that was not developed, would have forced every other parcel to catastrophically change any future designs.
Yeah, they couldn't put a garage there, they couldn't put anything there on the well shield, right?
I'm not exactly sure of the rules of well shields. It mostly has to do with wastewater supplies. But by encumbering someone two hundred feet into their property, this person did get a state permit, but this was, this was part of a denial. Which is very rare, the Development Review Board issues a denial. It's like one in, like, one percent. And the stance is that we are not after the technical specs. We're saying that if you are trying to encumber future development, that is not what we are for. So the technical specs, the state takes care of. We have one at environmental court. And it is town council's opinion, if someone We have one at environmental court and it is town council's opinion, if someone is not happy with the way the DRB has set a precedence, they can take us to court. We are usually very good at court.
This is Chris Kelly.
Yeah.
Yeah. They used to work together.
Yeah, yeah. So I have, I have more if, if, if you need more input from that. I have some other excerpts from the subdivision regulations where kind of is peripheral to this. DRB may require evidence that adequate water supply is available prior to granting final approval. Further, the following data shall be met for any of the subdivision being serviced by individual wells. There shall be no adverse impact on existing water supplies from proposed water supplies for subdivision, so. I, from the perspective of the Development Review Board side, it is important to keep that aspect, if not more clearly state that in the rules.
Yeah, I think we should mark the other state and reference those.
As it sits right now, it is only a definition in the.
Can I, may I read it?
Yeah, 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 sure, go ahead.
So the definition in the town regulations states the well isolation area required by the Vermont Wastewater and Potable Water Management Division. Ludlow requires that well shield be completely located on the same lot where the well is located. This definition does not exist in our subdivision regulation uh, definition section or the village regulation definition section, so I would like to hopefully see that also located in those as far as our changes go.
Yeah, we need to add that.
Right, well, the term is also not used in the town zoning regulations.
So you've got it defined, but then it's not used, so.
Right. Right.
Yeah, we should put it in there.
So we need to put it in there.
I think we, I mean, please do send me.
Yeah, I'll make sure that gets off to the ring.
Yeah, and we'll look into it some more, but.
Yeah, too.
So in, in really, that, the, the legal perspective of, that, that was as written as what would have, uh, we were expecting to go to court on that and we did not go to court. There, that was not the, to the best of my knowledge, that is not the only reason we have denied subdivisions. Is that there is other concerns, that is only one aspect.
Yeah, you said like one percent or something?
So, yeah, we, well, so we only deny like one percent of projects at which like the amount of denials is like, I think we haven't denied someone in like five years or something prior to this one. Usually in the examples that have been given recently is that if you have a development, we ask, hey, is it possible to contain them all? Or most of the time they are already contained. It is more of when you have a very small section of land that you're trying to break up into maximum profitability. So in this particular case that I read the excerpt from, I think it was an eight lot subdivision, had they gone to six, they would have been able to contain it all within their own development. And so that would have, at, from the opinion of the Development Review Board, would have been more conclusive.
Noah?
Um, what was it about the easement? Is that saying if the easement, if there's an easement written into it, it's allowed?
So the, so there's two aspects of that, so if, let's, let's take a figurative subdivision and it's all with inside the subdivision, but part of the easement for each lot, uh, which is always talked about in the hearing, would say that in your deed, basically, that there's an easement that your neighbor's lot has this well shield on your land, because originally it all was one parcel. There is a caveat that, let's just say, you and I were neighbors, you wanted to put in a new one, but your well shield is gonna encumber my property significantly, we could work out a deal, add that to mine.
So that is a lot, so that case of, hey, I have a piece of property, really the only place to put the well means I'm on your property fifty feet for that well shield, we can come to an arrangement.
You can, yeah. So in the case that I pulled the excerpt from, there was eight well shields on a variety, like, it wasn't just like, and we're, we also are generally, if you consider the setbacks of the lot. So if, let's just say a side setback is.
Could be anywhere from eight to fifteen feet.
Eight, so eight to fifteen feet, right? So if a well shield falls within the setback of your neighboring lot, nothing could be put there anyways, that is kind of a, we'll call that a gray area to give some more room. That answers the question.
There must be some situations where there's a pre-existing situation where it already.
Correct. So, so from the case I read from, uh, there was multiple wells that were abutting this property that were shared between pre-existing, uh, small lots where they basically had limited capability of potentially putting a new well due to their own wastewater. And so it, hence the, where they've got some real complications. I haven't experienced one where we were like, yeah, we're okay with this yet, but we hear such vast different, everyone is so different that it's, it's hard to say there's not a case where we might be okay with it. But I think from a legal opinion, uh, the perspective that the town has is that we would love, in, we don't ever like going to court, but the state of Vermont has never really talked about the, they haven't had a case go beyond the environmental court where they have to take a stance on this. And so at some point it will happen.
Right.
Uh, and then there'll be really good guidance.
Right.
Yeah, cuz in theory, there is the notification process when they get a wastewater permit for those well shields, but from the perspective of how many cases we've here and then we have complaints, almost no one actually ever receives that notification. So I don't know if that even means their permit is valid. That's another, that's another whole like, I don't wanna say left field, but.
George, I really appreciate you coming and explaining that to us.
Please make sure you send.
Um, Eric Golden?
Yeah.
Just a clarifying question, uh, could you have just mentioned today that in a, in a discussion on well shield, that you couldn't do anything on top of it? Um, it's my understanding that that's not the case, that.
You couldn't do anything on top of somebody else's well shield, that's what I was saying. I was asking that question.
Correct, just correcting if I'm, if I'm not understanding, but the way I always understood it is a well shield, whether it's yours is whatever, doesn't prevent you from putting something on top of the road, a garage or anything of the such. So I'm, I'm wondering where the, you know, when, when it says future development.
It has to do with wastewater.
Well, just particularly wastewater, not structures.
Correct.
Okay. You can put a structure on a well shield. So you could build your home on top of someone's well shield.
Uh, as currently, we have people doing it.
Okay, I understand.
Yeah, but you can't put your subject system there.
No, no, you can't, you couldn't build anything on top of it, that's, I just.
No, and, and I should have clarified the, the position that we're coming from is that
I understand, yeah.
Particularly when you break a big chunk into little chunks where you have your little chunk having everything and your, your space constraints are such that you might, if, let's just say you had a failed system, you might be able to move it, but if your neighbor encumbers that area.
Hypothetically, with the well shield, if you and I came to an agreement, you put a well shield on my property, I could still build on top of that.
Correct, yes, as long as it wasn't putting in a new, a new subject.
I understand.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that, cuz I didn't understand that either, obviously. Okay, do we have, have we exhausted our well shield information? Are we good? Hey, Martha, do you wanna move on with further updates? I think you wanted to work on vocabulary today.
Uh, yeah, so I, there were some in particular that I just wanted to ask you about. So currently you have group homes, the state added recovery residences to group homes. So I added that to your definition. You currently exempt group homes?
Are we currently exempt group home, group homes?
You don't have to, I just didn't know if that was a deliberate decision. You can require a permit for a group home for up to eight people. You can't require conditional use or anything, but you can require a permit.
But we don't require it, that's what you're saying.
You don't, right now, you, it's exempt. And then, um, if it's serving nine or more, right now you require site plan and conditional use, which is fine. I just wasn't aware, I didn't know if, you were aware that that's an, that's an optional allowance.
How does, how does the board feel about that? Think we should require a permit for group homes?
And you don't have to answer right now, I just, it's something maybe to think about.
I guess I'd need to hear pros and cons of that. You know, what would the impacts be? And what would the advantages be and what would the impacts be?
Fire marshal?
Yeah.
Fire marshal what?
Making, just, just making sure that the fire, like if it's not going through DRB or the permitting process, just make sure
That sounds important.
if it's a group home, that there's some kind of mechanism in place to make sure that we have documentation as a town, that the fire marshal has inspected the premises and that it is safe for a group home on the permitting facility.
Yeah, that sounds important.
Yeah.
We don't do any of that right now.
Right.
Brandy rassles.
Cuz, cuz you've been in the situation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and it's just.
I think we should.
It just sounds a lot like, what, when we talk about rental properties.
Yeah, I think we should.
Fire marshal, there, so the fire, the state fire marshal, Noah and I went to our, our conference a couple weekends ago and the state fire marshal is presenting, there is an opportunity for us to enter into an agreement with them where they, I don't know the specifics of it, so I don't wanna get into it, but I think that's something that we as a town should discuss with this board when we revisit our short-term requirements especially.
Yeah, me too.
Was, was that the, that was the short-term rental thing, I went anymore, yeah.
I saw you online.
Because we have group homes, yeah.
Yeah, but we don't require a permit for them, yeah. It sounds like.
Do we have definitions?
We need some way to regulate the, the life safety of it, broadly what it's.
Yeah. Well, I hear saying we wanna, we wanna require a permit that at least looks at that fire safety. So can we come up with some language for that?
The fire safety thing, as Aaron said, you probably have to work with the Department of Public Safety to, to become, I don't know, they delegate.
When I, when I issue a building permit, I will, something like that, I will write as a condition of the permit, even if it's an administrative approval, that a fire marshal inspection report is required, required just to give occupancy and that's what's reported with our clerk. So I think as we're discussing it, it does make sense to make this a permanent use, if that's what statute would allow, if it's an option, just so we can as a town record and document that you need to have a fire marshal inspection report prior to having, um, a boarding facility.
Right, and that's just a change in the chart, right? Moving it from, um.
From, from the exempt list to the permitted.
To permitted, yeah.
Useless.
So let's do that. Everybody agree?
Yeah, that's, that's a pretty simple change.
And then for group homes of nine or more, I always just, this is just me wondering, nine or more, I mean, more is kind of an infinite number.
Maybe you should come up with a number, nine or, nine or what? Uh, Noah?
Yeah, just to clarify, group home, a group home is defined as a residential care home operated under licensing or registration for less than eight people, um, of eight persons who have a disability as defined by da, 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 da.
So nine or more doesn't fit the description of a group home?
Well, just, just.
Big group home.
Thanks.
There is the licensing piece of that already in, in existence.
Kellen, do you have something? No? Okay. You did though, right? Am I imagining?
I, no, I did, and that, I, we, that was on, that's okay.
So that's a change we wanna make, for, for sure.
And then as far as whether there's any upper limit, all, you know, you can think about that, and, cuz.
What do we think about that?
What's the statutory definition?
The, the, the definition is the same, it's just that for eight or fewer, you have to allow it. You can, you can have it exempt, you can have it permitted.
What's?
For nine or more, you can require site plan and conditional use, which is what you currently require, but you have no.
You have no limit on numbers.
I think it's, what, five bedrooms, the fire marshal? Like, it's like five bedrooms, enough is considered like a lodging facility or something like that and then that's what automatically kicks in. And again, I'm, I'm not a thousand percent sure on this, so I need to double check. But there is a, in the fire safety rules, there is like a, a definition of the amount of rooms in a home before it kicks off that more kind of, um, I don't wanna say commercial use, but like need or a.
So it's typically
Yeah.
sleeping spaces, but I think because it's a residential care home, there's, that's almost like, cuz as soon as you, if you serve food at a, just a one property, that is lodging, is, you know, that's a different thing, even if you're, you know, catering to four people. Um, so I think it just may be one of those different things where it's outside of the regular rental kind of a piece and they probably have certain food and health codes and, you know, because they're, you know, it's a more of a medical thing, there's probably other stipulations more than just the fire side of it.
Right, I don't know what's involved in the state licensing of these, so. And, and if that's very rigorous, then, you know, maybe it's just not an issue.
Maybe we should double check with the regulations on it.
It sounds like they could be similar to licensing childcare facilities, you know? There, there, there's different requirements for ones under eight and those that are over eight and they are very rigid. And I can't imagine it would be any less for a residential care home than it would be for a childcare facility cuz you're sleeping overnight then, so I would think it would be more rigorous than childcare facility.
It's maybe something to look into.
Yeah.
A lot of ways.
Next, next agenda.
It's okay.
So hotels, we do list under limitations, parking, loading and noise. Um, but they're not actually listed as a permitted or conditional use in any of the districts.
Are they in the commercial district?
No, none of them. The motels are in the residential, commercial one, but hotels are not listed at all, so.
Do we want hotels in any district? We talked about, I know when we talked about the village zoning, we talked about inns and restricting like how big they can be, like we looked at the governor's inn and did some research on how many, you know, how many rooms we consider an inn and the size of an inn and what makes it an inn and not a hotel.
And I put the same definition in front of the village regs, it's just that, you know.
We don't have any. In the town.
Right, so technically right now, if someone wanted to put one in the town.
Well, Troy wants to put one in, in Fox Run, is that in the village Fox Run? No. So that would affect, you know, whether it could go in there or not.
Well, what are you, where are you talking now?
Troy up at the golf course, he wants, he wants to put in a hotel up there.
Okay, alright, cuz Fox Run is.
That's different?
That's different.
Okay.
It's called Fox Run.
Noah?
Motel is entrances on the exterior, hotel is entrances on the interior.
Yeah. And it says something too about guests and things that need to be on the bottom floor, like check-in and guest services.
Yeah, you allowed a bunch of other things, said hotels can have conference rooms and, you know, various other amenities.
Restaurant.
Yeah.
So what do we say about hotels?
So we're saying, we're, we're talking about allowing them in the village district?
No, we're talking about the town zoning right now, yeah.
You have one already.
I know, I was just thinking that, you got one, in Jackson Gore.
Jackson Gore, yeah. But that had, Jackson Gore is its own district though, with its own rules.
I would say West Two Hotels would fall under Act two fifty anyways and I think it would be safe to say that still make it a conditional use because then the DRB and everybody would have an opportunity to voice whether it's a good fit for.
How does the board feel about that? Adding hotels to town zoning?
It's inevitable, it's gonna happen.
I, I, I think you need to zone it and.
Yeah, well, like, Aaron said, Act two fifty is gonna take a really good look at it.
Yeah.
And the DRB is too.
But, I mean, you have like ten different districts and.
Yeah, yeah, we don't put it in every district.
You probably don't want to, all of them.
Yeah, precisely, exactly, yeah.
So.
But, yes.
But where do we want them? What districts do we want them in?
Do we wanna talk about that tonight or?
Or do we want it?
Yeah, you can, just something to think about, you don't have to answer. Yeah, you can, just something to think about, you don't have to answer.
Yeah, we gotta pick the districts, okay, so we're gonna table that one. And I'll send you guys, um, I should have sent you, Martha did send me a, she did send me a copy of the town zoning with the changes we've made so far and with the ones that she's proposing. I just didn't have Aaron printed for us, cause it was a hundred and twenty-two pages.
Is that one?
Yeah, but I'll send it to you right now, so I don't forget to send it to you. What do we have next, Martha?
So light industry is a term that's defined but not used. Maybe change that to industrial use, cause that is used and not defined, so.
From light industry to industrial use?
Yeah.
I love how you go through all definitions, clean them up, cause there's a whole bunch of them we don't even mention in the whole article and then it's, and the whole bylaws.
Um, recreational vehicle, and I unfortunately, this is where I can't pull up. Since I can't log on to my computer, I can't pull it up, but we did change the definition of that a little bit to clarify it, simplify it. And it was not changed in the village, so if you, when you forward it to everyone, if you can just look at it.
Yeah, we need to fix it in the village.
See if you like it, if you do, when the two merge, you can put the town definition in the village zoning.
Okay.
Um, again, you have a, a definition for, a definition for storage enclosure, enclosure slash building, which is not used. Um, you do use a term enclosed storage, which is not defined. So I'm suggesting a definition for enclosed storage, I'll get rid of the other one. So, uh, a space or structure used to contain materials that has walls or partitions on at least three sides and effectively screens the materials stored there in.
And that's the state definition?
That's the proposed one for enclosed storage. It's not a state definition, it's just.
It's just definition.
Um, yeah.
Part of the definition.
It's a part of the definition, but, yeah, you can look at it, tweak it. Let me know what you think about that.
I just sent it to everybody too, so you can see it.
Swimming pools, you exempt above-ground pools with a depth of thirty-six inches or less. Which implies that all other pools are not exempt, but there's no mention of any other pools. So if someone wants to put in an in-ground pool right now, what do they do?
Yeah, we gotta put that in there, for sure.
Yeah.
That they can, right, if they have their setbacks and all that stuff.
But they would have to permit it.
Right, exactly.
Exactly, they need permit for an in-ground pool. Right, is that what you're saying?
I'm saying right now that it just says they don't need one if it's thirty-six inches or less.
It doesn't say it's.
And it's above ground, so.
Right.
But there's, there's nothing saying we can have an in-ground one, there's nothing saying that they can put an in-ground one.
And you would assume.
It's just silent on every other type of pool.
That's crazy.
So I didn't know. I presume you allow pools, in-ground pools, but how do you allow them if they're not?
What do you think Aaron permitted?
In-grounding.
For pool?
In-ground pools. I know insurance companies have a lot to say about that, cause we have one.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm thinking about, is the insurance.
But if they don't have insurance, then.
Um, I don't see why a pool wouldn't be permitted.
Yeah.
Um, just like allowable by rate is what we're talking about.
Yeah.
I do not think a pool should be allowable, right, especially cause when we're putting it, so when we're collecting building permits, this runs like just the documentation, like who the contractor was or something, like who knows? Anything could go wrong with a pool, it's just good, I think, to keep track of installation and when it was done, where it was done.
By permitting, yeah.
Who, yeah, absolutely.
So let's add that to permitted uses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can tell you that West Windsor went through, I don't know, three, four, or five meetings like this, where the whole thing they discussed at each meeting was pools. Because there was a pediatrician on planning commission who had seen tragic results from pools not being regulated, so.
Oh wow.
If you wanna look at West Windsor, they're, they're pretty strict.
Yeah, me too.
I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I can't believe I'm doing this, but you said, um, above-ground pools up to thirty-six inches, so is there no regulation for something, uh, I'm sorry, above-ground pool, right, above thirty, uh, thirty-six inches, so is there no regulation for something deeper?
Right, I mean, all that's, the only thing that's addressed right now in one of those regulations is.
Above ground, up to thirty-six.
If it's, up to thirty-six, that's exempt, and, and, yeah, that was my point every, it's.
Right, so not only in-ground pools, but above-ground pools, above thirty-six inches need to be addressed.
Forty-eight inches, yeah.
What does, um, just curious, does West, West Windsor require fencing?
Yes, well, fencing or an automatic cover.
Oh. Oh.
Yeah.
We finally, finally found a insurance company that did require fencing, cause we live four miles out of town, out on the boonies. The only thing that falls in our pool are moose.
Fencing, fencing with a self-closing or a self-latching gate.
Wow.
How do you deal with setbacks?
Yeah, it would have to be setbacks, for sure.
I think it's a great idea to regulate pools based on this discussion so far.
Yeah, I think we have to do some research.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll look, I'll take a look at West Windsor's.
Um, we talked about well shields. The wildlife, wildlife refuge is just a thing that I'm puzzled by, so I keep coming back to it, and, um. In the definition, it mentions a single parking area and trails, and for me what I'm wondering is there's nothing really to regulate about a wildlife refuge, I mean.
Uh huh. Yeah.
You have habitat, you have animals there who are coming and going as they please. But you do mention a parking area and there's no specifications about that. What is meant by that, is that a space, is that?
Do we even have one within the town limits, Noah?
So the Olaf Ness Wilderness Area, up by the dams, um, in two thousand and ten.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they donated twenty acres of forest to the town of Ludlow in memory of their father, um.
How nice.
Who is a longtime resident of Ludlow after enthusiast, da, 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 da. So we do have a wilderness area.
Wildlife refuge.
Like the town, yeah.
Yeah. Is there a parking lot there?
So it's at the end of, um.
West Hill?
It's, it's at the end of the road.
Yeah, like West Hill Road.
And you can kind of park on the side, you have to like walk in.
Yeah. So then there's the gate where it goes into the, recon access the dams.
Yeah.
But, I don't know the boundaries of it or anything like that, but.
Interestingly, I will tell you that, um. There's a lot of, um, illegal four-wheelers and things like that on there, cause I, I like up there a lot.
Oh.
So I've seen it, and, um.
They destroy wildlife?
Well, uh, no, they destroy the land, you should, they go and they wheel around in four-wheelers in the dam area and really tear it up. And it's supposed to be not allowed, but there's no enforcement of it. And I'll tell you, my, my husband actually was up there with the dogs. And there were, I think he said, six or seven four-wheelers coming down, there's like a trail, coming down the trail. And he was there and he said, you know, you're not supposed to have these here. And they said to him, oh, well, we're, we're doing trail repair. And he talked to the snowmobile head person, who said, we would never have four-wheelers, like, like, and it was.
Do trail repair.
Yeah, and he did report it and was told they couldn't do anything about it. So it's, it's an interest, it's, I see it, and it just bothers me because they're tearing up the land. So maybe having some regulations around that wouldn't be a bad idea.
Eric?
Environmental.
Just to touch on that, so I bet on that trail with a four-wheeler, with the snowmobile club. We do get the permission from fishing and game to be out there, we let them know that we're going out there to do trail maintenance for the snowmobile trails. So you get permission, they do allow them out there.
Yeah.
But you're seeing it's probably not permitted, but, but I've been out there myself with the snowmobile clubs to do trail maintenance on that exact trail.
Yeah.
So there are times, but usually.
But there are also times, you know, people just get down in that like field area.
They monitor in the wintertime, it's a six hundred dollar fine if you get caught in the ball in the winter.
No, no, no. Oh. No, 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 it's, it's during the spring.
No, no, I'm saying in the winter, the sheriff is up there with the snowmobile, and if you're in the ball, six hundred dollars.
But there's no regulations every other season?
There's no enforcement. There's no enforcement, that's the thing.
Yeah.